Yeah, just the, and really, I always say that I'm a ground person. I think if you're talking to people at the doors. Welcome, everybody, to the Ken Sanchez Chambers. Exciting night. Great to see our beautiful chambers filled with great energy. Wonderful to see Commissioner Colley in the house. Welcome and thanks for being here. So I officially call this April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two Administrative Meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to order. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by County Manager Julie Morgasbaca. Thank you, Madam County Manager. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, yes. So Item Three A, National Small Business Week Presentation of Proclamation to be added to the agenda as four C under Proclamations. And Item Three B, let me see, Friendship Caucus Presentation of Acknowledgement added to the agenda as Item Four D as in dog under Proclamations. And that's, I'm sorry, Taiwan Friendship Caucus. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, County Manager. So we move on to Proclamations.
Madam Chair, if we can have a vote to add those two to the agenda, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Julia. If we can have a motion.
I move for approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kestrel and Commissioner Pescotti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So moved. Thank you. Now we will move on. I was too excited about all the great energy in the room tonight. So we'll move on to our first proclamation, which will be presented by Commissioner O'Malley, the Manal Boys Basketball Team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call up some folks to the podium and it, so, okay, I guess the whole team. And so we have, also, I want to make sure that, let's see, we have the, what do I want to do with my notes? President of the Manal School, and that's Lindsey Graham. And then we have Coach, Coach Daniel Gale.
I'll take Graham. Maybe not. I looked in South Carolina a while. It was tough.
So where is the, where, okay, all right, good formation.
Madam Chair, may we bring the commissioners, these are Panther cookies.
So they're Panther cookies and why are they Panther cookies? They're red and black, so they've got cranberries and chocolate chips, is my understanding. Let's get right to the food. There you go. You didn't get cookies. I'm gonna give these to my husband. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and begin with the proclamation. And of course, I also want to welcome former Commissioner Jim Colley, who, who, you know, is very, well, very well associated with the school. He's a strong supporter, to say the least. And so, so here we go. Acknowledgment. This is the Board of County, the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Manal Boys Basketball Team, acknowledging them in all school began educating children in the territory of New Mexico in eighteen ninety-six and has expanded its educational reach to include exceptional students from across the world. And acknowledging in the hundred twenty-five years of its existence, the school has contributed much to our community as a faith-based college preparatory day and boarding school for students in grade six to twelve, with a student-faculty ratio of seven to one. And acknowledging the school has thirty international students, academic and athletic achievers from nineteen countries on its Albuquerque campus, learning to work together as an international community, preparing themselves to be international leaders. It is hashtag world smart. And acknowledging the Manal Panthers Boys, Panther Boys Basketball Team, a member of the New Mexico Activities Association, playing in District Two slash Two A, compiled a twenty-three to four record in the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two basketball season, was the District Two, Two A Champions, and won the Two A State Championship at the pit on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, beating the Pecos Panthers by a score of seventy to sixty-three. And acknowledging the team made up of Brandon Chavez from the United States, Prashant Shohan, is that correct? Yeah, from India, Luke Farlander, also from the United States, Gauz, Gauzine Garcia, United States, Miguel Hova, Brazil, Maximus Micpa, England, and you could raise your hands when I call you. Brandon Olamu, Bahamas, Alexander Real from the, from this country, Ben Rosler, also from the United States, Sting Wu from China, and this is gonna be a little tough, Abhishek, is that correct? Okay, Abhishek Yadav from India, chose as their motto, quote, "My brother's keeper," unquote, hashtag be kind, be Manal. And acknowledging the inclusive supportive leadership of Coach Daniel Gale, who was named the New Mexico Two A Coach of the Year, and now therefore be resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners honors the Manal Panthers Boys Basketball Team for their excellent play, teamwork, and for supporting each other throughout the year, bringing the state basketball trophy for the Manal campus and giving our community and all the students at Manal School Panther pride. Done this twenty-sixth day of April in Bernalillo County, State of New Mexico, signed by all of the Commissioners. Welcome, Coach.
Can I add, oh, can I add, we missed one name off the list, Garrett Latch as well.
Oh, I did. Oh, did we, did, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Garrett, sorry, Garrett. We'll fix it. We'll fix it. So tell us a little bit about the team and, and, you know, your wins.
First of all, thank you. On behalf of the team and the school, thank you for having us. It's a great honor. This year has been a fun year. We fortunately managed to keep everyone from last year, the COVID year. And we had great aspirations as everyone else did. And we kind of got caught short through to the pandemic. And we kind of came in focused, especially we've got a couple of seniors who, you know, last, last year, last chance. So we wanted to make it something special. And when we got together, you know, we've got banners in our gym. And we sat out and we said, hey, you know, let's make history. Let's do something special, something that the school has never done before. And, you know, every day we was pushing each other to become better, you know, everyone at every position, team managers, coaches, everyone wanted to get back every practice and made sure it was competitive and did the best that we, we could, day in and day out. And, you know, kudos to these boys. You know, one of, one of the big things that I say is, even though I'm the coach, I, I follow their lead. You know what I mean? I, you know, I try and empower them and give them the, the direction in order to execute and handle what they need to. And, you know, they did exactly what they promised. So, you know, thank you to these young men that did what they were supposed to do and got us all across the line. So, yeah, that was our season.
Terrific.
Madam Chair, I don't know if anyone wanted to say anything because I'm gonna go down there and hand this to them.
Congratulations, Manal School.
Am I my brother's keeper? You guys obviously haven't seen New Jack City.
Old school.
So it's like, yes, I am.
Let's come on down, just kind of center with that big seal.
Commissioner Colley.
Get everybody in here. Okay, let's stick this way. And if you're behind somebody's head, like somebody's behind Commissioner, you take that one first. Okay. Okay, now I want to come over here. Click this way, please. Everybody in. Here we go. Three, two, one. Let's do one more. The gentleman right behind the Commissioner, move this way. The other guy, move over this way. I gotta see everybody's faces. Here we go. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, Panthers. Moving to Item Four B, General Services, we'll have Bernalillo County Risk Management Department Presentation of Acknowledgement by Lisa Sidia White to present. Oh, whoops. She had to navigate through the basketball players.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This afternoon, I'm honored to present this acknowledgement to the Risk Management Department for their outstanding service. So the acknowledgement reads, "The Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Risk Management Department. The risk manag, risk man, risk management is an important part of Bernalillo County Government in preventing losses through identification, assessment, analyzation, prioritization, and management of potential risk. In addition, Risk Management is providing ongoing, active, up-to-date, up-to-date safety trainings as well as managing insurance coverages and claims countywide. On January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, the Bernalillo County Risk Management Department received the Workers' Compensation Safety Award for the New Mexico Counties for having the lowest frequency of workers' compensation claims for any Class A county. The award includes a plaque and seven thousand dollars to continue its efforts. The award recognizes the entire staff's commitment to the health and safety of their fellow employees as well as reducing the use of taxpayers' funds on avoidance of injuries. Congratulations to the Risk Management Department for its dedication and service to protecting the health and safety of Bernalillo County employees. At this time, I'd like to bring Gina Ortega. She is the Risk Management Director. And this is the great safety award that was presented to Bernalillo County. So I'm gonna turn it over to our director.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Madam County Manager. My name is Gina Ortega. I'm the Director of Risk Management. And I want to say first and foremost, thank you for the recognition and the acknowledgement of this award. In the last year, Risk Management has made significant commitments to change the safety culture and direction of, that we are doing here at Bernalillo County. And this award is just an attribute to those changes that we are making and that we will continue to make moving forward. In addition to that, we could not, could not do that without the support from everyone here at Bernalillo County. Most importantly, our Deputy County Manager Lisa Sidia White and Madam County Manager Julie Morgasbaca. They provide an enormous amount of support to us and to our department in order to make these achievements. In addition to that, if I may, I would like to introduce members of our staff that are here this evening. We have Joe Rudarte, a safety specialist here, Lisa, Lisa Smoots, our administrative assistant. Lee Anjong, our loss control and, a safety and loss control administrator. We have Jess, who is one of our ATA staff employees, Mark Riego, who is one of our interns, Tori Chambers, who is our records technician. And without the team, working as a group, working as an entire department together on this, we would not be successful. So I just want to say thank you to them. And again, thank you to you all.
Thank you, Director Othello. And you have such a strong team. Thank you all. We appreciate you. Any other comments? Appreciate your work and keeping us safe here.
Thank you.
Come on down this way a little bit. I think we're gonna get everybody in this. Sorry. I know. The problem is there's more than one. I don't know what happened. I did. I turned it on, turned it off, and turned it on. There we go. And probably the flash, we go three, two, one. Thank you much.
Awesome. Thank you, DCM Lisa Sidia White and Director Othello for that great acknowledgement and award. Now we will be hearing from Vice Chair Benson on a National Small Business Week Proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and this is, this is an honor for me. My first job out of high school, I was a lifeguard for the city of Albuquerque. Then I worked for UNM. And then ever since then, I've only worked for small businesses or have started my own small businesses because I was inspired by my own bosses. And so this is Small Business Week, so I get to read this. I've asked to read this proclamation. Whereas nearly ninety-nine point seven percent of establishments within the greater Albuquerque region have fewer than two hundred and fifty employees. America's strongest economic growth in almost forty years has been driven by the resilience of our small business, who, despite a worldwide pandemic, continue to pioneer, innovate solutions to our country's greatest challenges and create opportunities for families and workers. And whereas, from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, to the small manufacturers driving our competitiveness on the global stage, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas, when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, because the country's thirty-two point five million small businesses create nearly two out of the three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since nineteen sixty-three to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas, Bernalillo County supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure their local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims May first through May seventh, twenty-twenty-two as National Small Business Week, done this twenty-sixth day of April, twenty-twenty-two, in Bernalillo County, State of New Mexico. That being said, I've asked Marcos Gonzalez down here to introduce Michelle Duran from the Small Business Administration. And right before you introduce Michelle, I just want to give a shout out to the SBA, who, as a small business owner, I've worked with several times over the last ten years. They've helped finance our businesses. And during COVID, they were amazing. The SBA was great. I would say as a business owner, they're difficult to apply for loans through, but once you have them, they're the best partner you can have. So that being said, Marcos, please, take it away.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Benson. Thank you on behalf of the over twenty-nine thousand small businesses that are in the metro area. Definitely appreciate your support next week and deserve everybody, not only next week, but always think about small businesses and enter your shopping there. So without, I do like to introduce Michelle Duran. She's the PIO for the, the SBA here in Albuquerque, which is just catty-cornered that way.
Thank you. I was waiting for, you know, to be able to clap and like, woo-hoo. But I got heels on. I had to walk over, you know. But we're neighbors. So that was cool, you know. I guess I'm gonna have to come over here at five o'clock, you know. Since I know where it is and, you know, it's right down the street. But my name is Michelle Duran and I am from the U.S. Small Business Administration, the New Mexico District Office. And I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of information about the SBA if you're not familiar because I was not until I started looking for jobs and was like, what is this SBA, right? You know, you're like the DEA, you know, the FBI, the IRS. So I'm like, who's the SBA? So, you know, it's not common, but you know, we try to get tattoos, you know. It's not as, it's not as cool, though, as like, you know, SBA who's like, is that your initials? You know. So as I was said before, the SBA was created in nineteen fifty-three. So we will be celebrating our fiftieth year next year. And we are the only go-to resource and voice for small businesses backed by the strength of the U.S. Government. We empower entrepreneurs and small business owners with resources and support to start, to grow, to expand, and to, most importantly, recover from many of these declared disasters. So I am waiting for, as the PIO, to get some of the, if, once they declare the mora fires or any other areas in New Mexico a disaster, then the SBA will see if we have anything. So, you know, you can subscribe to our email list and, and I'll send you guys an email. And if anybody that you know needs help or assistance, and for those declared disasters, they're also for, not small businesses, but for local residential housing as well. So the SBA delivers services through an extensive network of SBA-filled offices around, across the United States. So we have sixty-three district offices. And we partner with public and private organizations. So SCORE, we have WEST, which is a women's, women's center. We have our VBAC, which is for veterans and others. Let's see. And so the SBA does help all fifty states and our U.S. Territories as well. And just a little fact that I wasn't aware of until I started working at the SBA, that ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine point nine percent of businesses in the United States are small businesses. And ninety-nine percent of New Mexico businesses are small businesses. And in New Mexico, small businesses account for fifty-four, so over fifty percent of New Mexico employees. You know, and then there's us, government, government workers and stuff, right? But we gotta, you know, we gotta get these, this stuff going. But yes, the SBA, you know, it is government. There is some legalities and different hoops to jump through, but once you do get it.
Documents and forms to fill out.
But.
More forms.
Oh, gosh. And you gotta call us and stuff. So with that, we are here. There are nine of us currently in the New Mexico District Office, which isn't a lot. But I do have our cards and contact, contact information. If you want to give this card to a small business owner, you want to keep it, you can, you know, whatever you guys want, give it away, you know, like cookies, whatever you guys want. You know, you guys get cookies at work. That's weird. So, but thank you guys very much. On behalf of my district director, John Garcia, which you guys might be familiar with, and the rest of our New Mexico District Office, we appreciate it, and small businesses in New Mexico.
Thank you, Michelle. We have a plaque for you. So Marcos, just a second. I want to give this to you so you can present. But all jokes aside, the SBA really is, yeah, there's a lot of paperwork. So if you're a small business owner, just stick with it because it's worth it. Because the SBA is a great partner. And as a business owner, it's incredibly worthwhile and exhausting. And I'm honored to be an employer. And actually, my employee, one of my employees was texting me just now because we've got to clog sink. So she's got to call a plumber. So, yeah, shop local. Everybody, shop local. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
So since we have you here, since we have you here.
Oh, you're asking questions?
Yeah. Do you consider artists small business? Because I'm five-seven. That's about, that's it. That's pretty small.
I know. Me too.
Kind of small. But no, do you, do you like entertainers, artists?
The small business standards are based on the NICS codes, which is the national.
So no, I think is the answer.
Well, if you are any part of the, hold on, I have it right here. Oh, goodness. The NICS codes are like when you, when you are a restaurant or your full-time restaurant or your, whatever. It's, it's a code for what's part of the economy you are part of. And you do, you put it on your taxes as well. And that's what decides what it is. So it is the North American Industry Classification System. And it's codes that are signed to all economic activities within twenty sectors. Sec, yeah, sectors. So the definition of small varies by industry. So that, those are each their industry. So for example, like a bakery, retail, they're, they're, they're based on the number of employees or your retail, your annual, your average annual receipts. So for a bakery, a retail bakery, a small business is five hundred employees or less. For a commercial bakery, it's a thousand employees or less. For a full-service restaurant, it would be eight million annually. And anything below that. So it is actually, you know, a big portion.
Well, you mentioned entrepreneurs, which I think is what, right? Like if, well, because he's saying individual artists.
Yeah, just, you know, I know that during COVID, we, we as artists, we couldn't apply for anything. We didn't get.
You gotta find which NICS code.
Until they, until they said, well, gig, gig workers. And then that lasted like two months. And I'm just, you know, I know there's a lot of artists, even I had Sound Valley Pride Day, and we don't have musicians. We don't have bands together anymore. You can't even find, you know, bands because they had to do something else because of COVID because they couldn't survive anymore. And so, you know, we were running into, you know, how do, how do we consider them? And so, you know, we were running into, you know, how do, how do we consider them businesses? And so I'm just, so maybe me and you could have a conversation on another day, not during a meeting. But I just wanted, since people are watching this meeting, to, to, you know, say, wow, what about us? I thought I might just ask that.
Yes, and we, we have resource partners and everything to help anything, even if you're a sole proprietor. Any small business, as long as you are, you know, receiving income from your business, right? We have free, you could get counseling, help with your business plan, help with starting, help with closing your business, help with taxes, help with getting all these forms.
Yeah, those sorts of things, okay.
Even emergency disaster plans now, you know, sometimes they come to us for those things. Anything basically, I mean, this is the government, we're trying to get the word out, right? You know, SBA is not as cool, but we're trying and.
Well, if you help out artists, I think we'll put it on there. We'll go for it.
I'll make it cool.
Take a card, give us a call, yes.
But I did, I did want to ask Ms. Duran and Director Gonzalez, is there, what are the ways that we can promote next week? For Small Business Week?
So I did send him, there are, next week, the SBA, the headquarters are, is having a four-day National Small Business Week Summit. So it's all four days. We have awards. So we have a national small business person for each state. And the national one will be awarded. So there's, you know, contracting, all kinds of stuff will be announced then. But small businesses can join. And there's, there's, it's kind of like, it's an online conference, so you can join different, different, whatever you're interested in, right? Like if you're a startup or you want to hear about, I didn't look at the agenda that well. But it's anything small business. I mean, it's three, it's four days, a full, that. And also at the New Mexico District Office, we are doing a one-hour webinar on Tuesday from eleven to twelve. And it is on our website, which is sba.gov/NM, which is for New Mexico. And you can look on the calendar and if you'd like to join that, it's free. See who our winners are for New Mexico. But the national one is going to be really valuable for all, it'll tell you about our programs. It'll get you in touch with some counselors, anything you need, resources. You should come, sign up. We'll help you. Call me, we'll get it.
Advise anybody listening as well, they can contact the County Economic Development Department. We'll be glad to connect them to SBA and other resource partners we have. And then individually, we're pushing this out on our social media channels, encouraging everybody to shop local. So when you're getting coffee or having that great meal, make sure to take a picture, put it on Facebook, Instagram and tag that restaurant. They greatly appreciate the support.
You can tag it Small Business Week.
Great. Thank you, Director.
Please, Marcos, here you go.
And that was more than I expected. Cookies and a plaque?
There you go, in three, two, one.
Oh, come on again.
Two, one. One more, three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you for the extra time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We thought you were trying to take Commissioner Casada's comedian job. Okay, great. Now we have one more proclamation by both Vice Chair Benson and Commissioner Piscotti for Taiwan Friendship Caucus.
Thank you. The Bernaleo County Taiwan Friendship Caucus. Bernaleo County continuously endeavors to attract businesses while cultivating an economically advantageous position to welcome other countries, states, governmental entities, and enterprises interested in locating and conducting business within the county. Bernaleo County leaders continue to forge relationships that foster a professional and growth-oriented business climate that positions the county for growth into the next decade and beyond. Leaders from Bernaleo County and the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office met to discuss economic, trade, and cultural relations between New Mexico and Taiwan. Discussions emphasize Bernaleo County's culture, business acumen, and quality of life and possible future engagement between business, nonprofits, and the great country of Taiwan. Commissioners Charlene Piscotti and Walt Benson spoke enthusiastically about furthering relations with Taiwan and welcomed Taiwanese companies to look at central New Mexico as a future site for investment because of its welcoming business environment. It is with great honor that Bernaleo County extends an invitation to Taiwan to continue to explore the benefits that the county has to offer in its business-friendly environment and encourages all business to consider Bernaleo County as its home or location for future expansion. Bernaleo County, you can count on us as we are always open for business.
Madam Chair, I want to say one more thing. Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. And it was a pleasure having lunch with you at the luncheon the other day. But I just wanted to speak out that this conversation started about a year ago, actually. After, a little after the year began, and I was reading in the morning paper a article how new Taiwanese companies were coming and opening up shop down in Santa Teresa. And my first response was, woo-hoo, yes. And then my second response is, wait a minute, why are they down in Santa Teresa? What can we do to get them up here? So I reached out to Mei Ling and Marcos, who then immediately, they didn't waste any time. They set up a conference call with Randy Trask, who is in business development, international business development, on how we could attract these Taiwanese investments up to Bernaleo County. So then when we had this luncheon, it just continued this conversation. So Marcos, please, I'd like some words from you, because I know you're, you're thinking about this twenty-four seven and this is your, that's what you do. This is your job is business development and bringing businesses here that, that create opportunities for our local residents so that they don't move out of state for opportunities, that they get to come here and maybe we can attract new people here. So I know you've brought some guests that I've been able to work with before, so please introduce them.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair and the Commission. Just last week's meeting was another great reminder that we are still in a global economy and how we need to further those relations to continue to grow our economy locally here. And we appreciate your continued support of being able to provide these educational opportunities to businesses in Bernaleo County and even down to our small businesses as well, because they'll take advantage of those international trade opportunities. And so I just wanted to ask, I asked to provide some brief remarks. Celeste Nunez, she's the Director of International Business Resources with the New Mexico Trade Alliance, who connects companies to international assistance programs to be able to help grow their businesses. And Pam Feather, she's with Albuquerque Sister Cities Foundation, who helps promote the cultural exchanges that happen between, especially with Taiwan, with the city of Hualui and the city of Albuquerque. So.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, it is my distinct pleasure to join you all today. As Director Gonzalez mentioned, I'm Celeste Nunez, Director of International Business Resources with the New Mexico Trade Alliance. The New Mexico Trade Alliance is New Mexico's premier export assistance program. We were founded in two thousand and twelve as a partnership between the city and Bernaleo County to leverage scarce resources and create a export assistance program for Albuquerque Metro companies. We're really proud of that success, which has resulted in now the Trade Alliance overseeing the International Trade Office on behalf of the state government. Some of our services include international business education, topics related to export compliance, logistics, export financing. We also do company consultations, which are free of charge. Oftentimes, we see companies facing an obstacle as they're trying to secure an international sale. And we strive to be that point of contact to help them navigate and find a solution. And finally, we help with international business development, which is how we actually help companies find international customers. And one of the major ways that we do that is through the SBA-funded STEP grant, State Trade Expansion Program Grant. It's a reimbursement grant program that helps companies initiate export activities and help them gain and grow those international sales. So they can do that, for example, by participating in a trade mission or exhibiting at a trade show or business matchmaking. And we help companies with business matchmaking through our Mexico office, which is a partnership with the city and UNM. But to today's topic, I'd like to talk about Taiwan. And the state's Economic Development Department actually has an office in Taiwan through the, in the city of Taipei, helping companies connect with Taiwan. We are eager to hear that our elected officials are excited about Taiwan because we've identified this as a key target market. It's a lot of opportunity. And one of the reasons that we've identified it as a key target market is because Taiwan's consumer base is large enough and at a capacity that can meet New Mexico's unique products. For example, we've been corresponding with the Taiwan office, connecting local New Mexico companies, some Bernaleo County companies as well, with the trade rep in Taiwan, who is able to promote their products on behalf of the company despite travel restrictions. As you guys might know, currently Taiwan has mandated ten-day quarantine. And the trade rep is able to attend those exhibits, those events and promote the products and find leads. And we found this to be a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for New Mexico companies because they've been able to generate a large amount of leads. Some of the recent examples of Bernaleo County companies that have benefited from this partnership are, for example, Sombra Cosmetics, Dr. Janine Oil and Wellness Products, Nail Sound Labs, medical-grade cleaning solutions, Be Clean Hand Sanitizers, among others. And we've seen this result in around fifty distinct leads for New Mexico companies. Another reason that Taiwan is a key target market is based on global trade trends. As was mentioned previously, we've already seen Taiwan see the borderplex region in their strategy to nearshore to the U.S. But we believe that those opportunities are not limited to just the southern part of the region of the state, but also here where we're at in home. And additionally. That's right, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Celeste.
And additionally, we know that the U.S. will be investing to fortify critical parts of supply chain, some of those being semiconductor chips. To give you all an idea of how important this specific category hub is for New Mexico, New Mexico's top export product to the entire world is titled semiconductor and electric components. In fact, that export is valued at around one point six billion dollars. And Taiwan is New Mexico's sixth, it ranks sixth as their export market. And the top product that we are exporting to Taiwan is that exact thing, semiconductors and electric components. The state of New Mexico recognizes the massive potential of Taiwan. In fact, they've already identified wanting to lead a trade mission. The exact details, given travel restrictions, are still to be discussed. But whether it's an export, company recruitment to a trade show, or foreign direct investment, or both type of mission, the Trade Alliance, in conjunction with the Taiwan Office, will be working together to organize the agenda, the travel arrangements, and company recruitment. And just to close, I want to say that we continue to support companies on behalf of Bernaleo County's Economic Development Department. And we continue and are always looking to find new ideas and opportunities to work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was quite exhausting, thinking of all those things. I feel like I have the fun job. I am with Albuquerque's Sister Cities Foundation. What is that? Well, after World War II, President Eisenhower felt a real need to connect people of cities together again. So in nineteen fifty-six, he formed Sister Cities International. And we, Albuquerque, over the years, not in fifty-six, but we became one of the cities to have a, what they call a twin city, a paired city somewhere in the world. We have ten cities over various continents. Waleen, Taiwan, is one of them. We became sister cities in nineteen eighty-three. There have been so many events that had happened. So to give you an idea of what our role is in this, is we're to build the people-to-people connection. When you sit down at a table and you have a meal with someone, conversations come up, ideas come up, that synergy happens. Well, in that synergy, there may be a business opportunity. Well, if that happens, we'd go to the Trade Alliance with the Economic Development Department and say, here, here's an opportunity for you. So our part is to build those relationships and strengthen them and keep them strong. Through the pandemic, the amount of virtual connections was amazing. The letters between Mayor Keller and the mayor of Waleen were amazing. They sent Mayor Keller masks, they sent hand sanitizer, they made soap, Mayor Keller sent back things. You know, it didn't stop because our world stopped. The communication is the key to keep that connection going. So we were very active through this whole timeframe in a very different way with the virtual world. We have one developing friendship city, which is like exploring first before you become a full-blown sister city. But with Waleen, I want to share one experience that, that lent to a little different cut of what economic can be. We, until the pandemic, there have been balloon fiestas in Taiwan. We know what revenue balloon fiesta brings to us in Albuquerque, right? To Bernaleo County, it's huge. I have a cousin who's flown for thirty years and she was at one of the balloon fiestas in Waleen. And after thirty years of flying, she said, that is still my most memorable inspirational flight I have taken over my thirty years was flying in Waleen. So, you know, economics grows out of events. So we, we are about culture, we're about education. We are about developing opportunities or through relationship for economics. But we stop at that and then hand it over to the Economic Development Department, where actually you can think of us as we are the nonprofit arm of Albuquerque Economic Development Department. So we're part of them, but we have a specific mission and charter. And I will tell you, over the years, I have built so many friendships lifelong in different cities that we're sister cities with, and we look forward to that. And our city of Waleen is one of the most beautiful cities that you could go to. The people are warm and it's such a wonderful experience to be able to go somewhere else in the world and realize how big our world is, but how small we can make it when we connect people together. So I thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
City piece, that just happens and the, how do people, like can cities continue to become sister cities?
Interest in our community, business interest has come forth. And they're saying, well, how can we create that relationship? And so they come to us or a mayor, it could be the county, could come to us and say, you know, we. "We would really like to be a twin city with whatever city that is." Now, we then have to go to Sister Cities International to make sure they're not already overwhelmed with many other cities being twin cities. Because not only the US, it's the world that pairs with cities throughout the world. So, yeah, but it's um, a people's interest is a big part of how it happened.
Thank you, thanks so much. Thanks for all the presentations. Awesome, thank you. Um, before we hear public comment, we will hear communications items five A and five B. Um, we're gonna move on to five A, Community Services, Bernalillo County Extension Services. Thank you, presented by Sarah Hayes.
Good evening and thank you for having me, having me here and having me represent Bernalillo County Extension, which is a service for everybody here in Bernalillo County. And I'm going to talk about the program I run, which is called the Ideas for Cooking and Nutrition Program. I know what the heck, well, we call it ICANN, so I can cook. Anyway, so a little bit about that program is we actually are part of the Extension Service, but our funding stream is different. So we stand for Ideas for Cooking and Nutrition. We are a free and fun, hands-on nutrition education, reaching adults and children at no cost. And we are funded by our Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program and our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Education Arm. So if you've heard of SNAP, formerly called food stamps, that is now currently SNAP. Those are the folks that are eligible for SNAP, who are the people we help or our lower-funded schools. Um, so our goal, really, our mission is to reduce nutritional health disparities in New Mexico and make a measurable positive, positive impact on the well-being of our communities through evidence-based, hands-on nutrition experiences for adults and youth. In other words, especially now more than ever, we help people not be hungry. Mostly through not just nutrition education, but we also help them resource with resource management. Can you all see this? Yeah, oh, there they are. Nice. Okay, just making sure. So basically what I explained to you, we're also from New Mexico State University. As an equal opportunity employer, I have to put this in everything when I present. So, there you go. I said it all in a nutshell. All right. No one has to read that. All right. So I just wanted to take a, ooh, went a little too far there, very sensitive there. There we go. I just wanted to take a moment that we do this through series education and that's where we see the most change. So some of the numbers, as with any government agency, we are supported from the USDA. Um, we have to collect a lot of data. So everywhere we reach, we collect data. So the numbers you see here are the people we have reached throughout twenty twenty-one. And of course, like everyone else, they shut down and we're a hands-on program. We had to go virtual. So, boy, we had to pull some tricks out of the hat because a lot of times, if you've ever been in a Zoom meeting, you see nothing but names, 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 or I don't want to put my camera on because my hair is not done right, or I'm laying in bed. Um, you know, a lot of different things. So having our staff talk to a screen, it was a whole new learning curve. So, but still, we were able to reach over ten K, ten thousand people in the county with over fifty percent, fifty partnerships and went to social media, which we're still working on. All right. The number I really want to point out, though, besides the numbers of ninety-six percent of our adults um, and children have changed, at least improved their, a nutrition behavior, at least one, in one area. They've also, the big number I want is to the bottom left. And it's, they all saw a sixty-one percent reduction in their grocery bill, just by taking our classes. That was like an eye-opener for me because we all know, I don't care who you are right now, when you go to the grocery store, you're, it's like sticker shock. Uh, it doesn't matter how much money you've made, I mean, eight ninety-nine is eight ninety-nine, it was for a pound of beef. You're like, what? So this has really, really been very impactful on the wallets of some of our most vulnerable people. So I just wanted to point that out. The sixty-five percent, unfortunately, um, physical behi- physical activity, it kind of went down. And I'm a personal trainer too, so that kind of makes me a little, we need, we have some work to do there. But of course, I don't know about you, but during a pandemic, it was really kind of tempting to watch Netflix and eat ice cream. Or people went to their kitchens. I was actually really surprised about how many people went to their kitchens to go, hey, I'm gonna cook. So anyway, we kind of move or, forward. So I wanted to show, share you some pictures about some of the things that we do in the county. So when we could go to places, we did. And a lot of our classes are outside. And right now, we are actually working with the Kick, Bernalillo County um, Open Space Program to start urban, urban ag and open space programs to actually start getting more classes outdoors. And I love that some of our open space programs are smack in the middle of the city where the people are. So wherever the people are that really could use our help, we just really want to create um, community within that group, within those groups. So just wanted to share a few pictures, the art walk and everything, that's when we could go out. And now, I gotta tell you, we really want to grow. We had, you know, a lot of people are opening up very slowly and now we begin to offer in-person classes. And we are going to continue to expand. I was kind of overwhelmed today with a lot of phone calls and emails saying, hey, we need some classes. So I was very excited about that. Um, and I just wanted to also say, it aside from being a health and nutrition program, ICANN is something that gives you hope. And I have a little story about that and I promise it's gonna be short. So it's really, I feel very grateful to be standing up here today and actually talking about this program that impacted my life so much as a, about twenty-two, twenty-three years ago, as a WIC mom. On every single service you needed, because I was a single parent, I was able to, I took one of these classes because sometimes WIC, WIC has to give you nutrition education. Say, they said, hey, take these classes. So I did. And I honestly, I'm not sure if I'd be standing up here today. And I'm leading the program becau- and I was just taking free nutrition classes, but I just want to tell everybody how impactful they are to our, our participants. It doesn't, it's not just a nutrition program. ICANN gives them hope and it changes their lives. And I would not be standing here today, talking to you about it if it wasn't for that program and just loving nutrition and health. So went to college and all of that. So anyway, that was about twenty, twenty-three, twenty-two years ago. But here is my shameless plug, take a picture of it, of our social media. That is how you can get information of where our classes are. We help some of the most vulnerable people in New Mexico or people just trying to get off their feet. We, we kind of give them a little nudge. So, anyway, any questions?
So much, I um, took those classes too when I was in WIC. Um, appreciate them. I, I think so much now, people are seeking the information and I'm glad you all are ready, ready to offer it, especially to our communities that can't maybe pay for big um, nutrition advice or whatever.
Oh, sure. We go, and we go to organizations who are already working with people um, who maybe, for instance, Cuidando los Niños or PB&J Family Services. Um, right now, we're working with Help, trying to get with Help New Mexico through their SNAP Ed Employment and Training Program. So that we take the hustle out of what it feels like to get yourself off, onto your feet and you have kids to feed, but you have a job now. And it's just, we really help take the hustle out of that, lack of a better word, because that's what I call it. The hustle, the grind, um, really, and simplifying their lives to where they're just like, back to basics, just being with your families over a good meal that's healthy and at the same time that you planned for, so that you're saving a little more money. So, anyway, that's just, in a nutshell, it's small, but we make big ripples, so.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the Extension Service does a lot of things. And um, I, I think a lot of folks don't know what you do, uh, a lot of times. And so this program in particular, I always remember this program, uh, because you're right, it's very impactful. And you were doing cooking classes over there off of Manol, right? Is that where you loc- that's your?
Yes, that is one of the organ, one of the places we do cooking classes. We actually travel, we have our nutrition educator staff that travel. And I tell everyone that we work with, we bring everything, including the chick, the chicken sink, the kitchen sink, sometimes, not the chicken sink. But the kitchen sink, sometimes we, we bring everything with us. And yes, I really, really would love to be a part of ending that. We don't want, we are, seems like we're the best-kept secret in the county and we're not even trying to be a secret.
Right, and it's located in the, uh, that area, which is right next to the New Public Cultural Center, which is behind there.
Right.
You're right, it's, a lot of people don't know what you all do, so thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Madam Chair, real quick, um, I just want to thank you for all you're doing. And, and mentioning that you were toughing it out as a single mom. I'm proud of you for what you're doing and, and carrying the torch. And I was raised by a single mom, so uh, as the product of your household or a similar household to it, uh, well done.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you so much.
It was a long time ago, but yeah.
I want to try and get you into the tiny home village.
We can, that is exactly who we try to reach. And for them, really trying to help them get off their feet. So, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks for having us. How good evening.
Thank you so much. Great, items five B, um, the, finally, the great Kate Becker um, is going to be giving us a presentation on University of Mexico Hospital Report, Third Quarter Fiscal Year Twenty-two.
Thanks for having me. It's lovely to be in person again. And what an inspiring group of people we've had tonight. It's like we're on this big wave, so hopefully it keeps going.
Bring it, you know.
I do have a presentation in the packet. I'm still seeing Let's Grow. Oh, okay, thanks. There you are. Thanks. Fantastic. Alrighty, can you see it? Okay, great. Alrighty, so um, it's been two years since COVID started, right? It's also been four years, actually, since I came and interviewed for this job. And when I got here, I flew in and landed and went to the Enterprise Car Place. And the guy at the car place is just making conversation while he's getting your car. And he says, oh, what are you here for? I said, I'm here to interview for a job. He says, where? I say, UNM Hospital. First words out of his mouth, he says, they take care of everybody. So I'm just gonna spend a few minutes of your time tonight telling you, over the last two years of COVID, how we lived up to that mission of taking care of everybody because I want you to be really proud of your hospital. Oops, sorry. Okay. Alrighty, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about COVID-nineteen and patient care. This is a slide that shows our census over the last two years. That red line is our number of licensed hospital beds for adults. So that first big dip you see is when the first wave of COVID happened and we had to shut down everything. You'll remember the whole world came to a screeching halt. That's the last time we were below our licensed number of beds. And what you can see, and the next slide I'm gonna show you is the COVID census, is even when COVID was going down, we were still climbing in census. So you see a COVID surge and then that big peak you see on the right was this last winter's COVID surge layered on top of very high census. So this is what our COVID admissions have looked like over the last two years, right? Right now, we're at about a steady state ten every day for adults, one or two for pediatric patients. That seems to kind of be our plateau. So how did we care for all of these people? Like, how did we even fit them in the building, right? So over twenty twenty, we've made a variety of spaces on the inpatient platform, alternative care sites. And I won't read all of these to you, but just to give you an idea, keep your eye on that first one, that conference room in BBRP fifteen hundred, if you've ever been in that conference room. That's been at least five different things in the last two years. It's been a respiratory care center, it's been an annex to the emergency department and you're gonna see it come up again in the next couple of slides. And then we converted a bunch of spaces to inpatient beds. We also converted a lot of outpatient spaces, we moved clinics to other spaces. We created a COVID testing site at the stadium. I mean, you may remember that if you got to drive through there. And then in twenty twenty-one, it kept going, right? So we created the vaccination site at the pit, we gave over a hundred thousand vaccines at that site. Urgent Care moved into the BBRP fifteen hundred, we moved pre-procedural testing. Then Urgent Care moved again. Then the BBRP fifteen hundred is now a discharge clinic. So just a tremendous amount of flexibility from our facilities team. I'm gonna talk a little bit later about travelers and additional staff that we had to hire, but our facilities folks never added extra staff. They were doing all of this, like with the regular maintenance of a building that was built in nineteen fifty-four and then a second building and all of our clinics and all of this moving people all over the place. It was fantastic. So despite all of that, um, we kept doing the things we're here to do, right? There are a lot of things that we're the one and only of. We're here to provide healthcare for New Mexicans in New Mexico. And there's a lot of things that if we don't do, they can't stay here, right? So the two things I'm gonna talk about are trauma, which you'll see that right-hand group of ours is our trauma activations the first year of COVID. The, I'm sorry, the left-hand group, the right-hand group is the second year of COVID. So five hundred more trauma cases at the same time as we're dealing with the pandemic. We also got certified as the only comprehensive stroke center in New Mexico during the pandemic, right? We're giving the highest level of stroke care anywhere in the state. This is just a little slide of our stroke admissions. So who did all this work, right? You're gonna hear a lot about that. So we did a couple of things in twenty twenty. One of the things we wanted to do was get our um, wage, step and grade structure sort of reorganized and inconsistent. Because a lot of times, we were having a challenge where people who had been with us a long time um, maybe weren't as caught up as people who joined us later. And so how do you sort of deal with that inequity? Then in twenty twenty-one, we not only did another wage adjustment, but we brought our minimum wage above fifteen dollars an hour. That was a really big priority for us, even during COVID. And it gave us a little bit of a jumpstart in the legislature this last year. Um, we did not pass any of our increased health insurance costs on to our employees. We implemented disaster relief funding, we added to their medical leave banks. We really wanted to support folks who were doing this work. We added more than eight hundred jobs in the last two years. And we couldn't fill all of those with permanent staff. So we added more than five hundred people who are what we call travelers or contract labor. And you're gonna see the impact that had on our finances in just a minute. So how do we take care of the people who are taking care of you, right? We have an incredible employee well-being team. We expanded that team during COVID. They do wellness rounds, they do decompression, they provide all kinds of services for our staff. We have a really, really sincere commitment to taking care of our caregivers. And so in all of that, and I want to give a shout out to, I know that this is a huge team effort. There's seven thousand people working in our building. But if any of you know Mike Ciccarelli, that human being has had a load on his shoulders over the last two years that is unbelievable. And this is what he has done with everything else. He's also building a new hospital tower, which is just spectacular. So you can see it going up. If you've been by there lately, the parking garage, the exterior is finished. It's got power in it, which is fantastic. That's gonna be opening this summer. Next step is taking down the old parking garage. And if you've been watching the tower go up, that's happening too. It's just every day when I go by there, I'm like, yay, it's very exciting. So that continues and we actually got approval to add two more levels to that tower. So it'll be ninety-six beds when it opens in twenty twenty-four. And then to get our staffing caught up, it'll be another ninety-six beds about two years after that. That's gonna add another more than seven hundred employees to our FTE count. So really working now in the pipeline for training people and getting folks in, in a position where they can take these jobs because we're trying to really build that pipeline, starting with high school, actually. We really have to start recruiting there. And if you ever want to check out the webcam, you can always watch it under construction. But the hospital tower wasn't the only thing we were building either. Um, so the Movement Disorder Center will be opening this fall. Um, that's also very important. We don't have a center like that in New Mexico that specializes in Parkinson's and other movement disorders. And then consistent with our commitment to expanding primary care for Bernalillo County, um, our senior health clinic will be moving and opening. And so that will be expanded primary care service for, for that population. And then additionally, we'll be expanding Lobo Care, which is UNM employees, residents and families. And then another primary care clinic, similar to our North Valley and Southeast Heights Clinic. So that's all really good news. And then the centerpiece, the thing folks have been waiting for a long time, the Crisis Triage Center. Um, that's coming in early, very early twenty twenty-four also. I think everybody knows what the components are of that. This is our timeline, the RFP is out right now for that construction. So we're very looking forward to choosing a contractor for that and moving forward with that. And we so appreciate the county's partnership on this. It's been a great effort to really plan something that can provide a no-wrong door for whoever comes in a crisis and can get whatever services they need. We're really excited about that. Okay, all that costs money. So this was our average daily census. This is two things that are important. The blue line is what's called our Case Mix Index. That tells you how sick our patients are. Just for a point of reference, we run just about two point one. Average is one, just so you know. So these are very- Average is one, just so you know. So these are very, very sick patients. The red line is how long they stay with us. And when that line goes up, that means our capacity is pressured even more because we have people staying with us longer. So they're in those beds longer. This is what revenue looked like. The left-hand number is our monthly average in FY20 for revenue, just over 80 million. The next number is FY21 average. And then you start to see month by month over the last year. You can see we had a pretty good month in September and then another one in December. But we've had basically steady decrement from our FY21 performance until this last year, uh, last month, March. The reason for that is because when COVID goes up, everything else we do goes down. All of our surgeries, all of our procedures, all of the things that are drivers of revenue go down. And so that means there's a tremendous amount of pressure on our revenue.
Excuse me, Dr. Becker. That last slide, is that the, did you say that's monthly revenue?
Monthly revenue. And then the two left-hand numbers are average for FY20 and FY21 per month.
Okay, thank you.
This is what our comp and benefits look like. And this is the same scale. So FY20, monthly average, FY21, monthly average. And then you just see it taking off like a rocket when we have to really hire that contract labor force. So the American Hospital Association released a report yesterday. The average cost of contract labor over this last COVID surge went up 230%. So it's not just us that are experiencing this, right? It's a, it's a national problem. But if you think about what was happening to revenue as this is going on, and then you see what's happening with the cost of comp and benefits, you can kind of tell as we're dealing with this census, this is where this is going. So I'm going to draw your attention to a couple of lines. The first one is that top line, core patient revenue. That's our clinical revenues. And that's the same thing you saw on that graph. Then about a third of the way down is our total employee comp and benefits. And that's the same thing you saw on that graph. And if you go to the very bottom line, that first number, 17,190, is our FY21 monthly average net. If you look left to right, you can see that every month since September, we have been operating at a loss. And our cumulative loss year to date is that far right-hand bottom corner number of just under $30 million. So we are ending the quarter and year to date at a just about $30 million loss. I do want to tell you a couple of hopeful things about that. There's four things that impact that, right? Two are within our control and two are not. The first one within our control is managing that contract labor expense. And so we're rolling off labor and you saw that number start to come down as the months go on. The second one is bringing back those surgeries and delayed care so that we can begin to rebuild that revenue number. Those two are within our control. And you can tell as you look at this, that January was a $10 million loss, February 12, but by March, we're pulling that up, we're up to a $3 million loss for the month. So we feel like the things that we are managing, that plane's coming back up. The two things outside of our control are FEMA reimbursement. We have about $55 million pending in claims over the last two years with FEMA. We don't know how much of that they'll approve. We don't know when they'll approve it and we don't know when it will get paid. So that's out there, but we don't know what it will be. The second one is in this last legislative session, and we really appreciate the governors and the legislature's support on this. The legislature passed COVID relief for labor costs for health care. We don't know how much we will actually be allocated at UNMH for that, but we know that HSD is working closely with CMS and trying to get that approved and make sure that they get that out to folks. So some amount will come in, but we don't know what that will be. And then lastly, we also want to say thanks to the legislature for the Children's Psychiatric Center approval. This is such a deep, deep, deep need in our community. And our current platform is a series of cottages, which is really hard to operate efficiently because if you have four kids on a side and one child needs a much more intensive level of care, that means we have to shut down those other three beds. So we can't use all of the beds. So the new facility will be built in a single facility. So we can actually use all of the beds, even if one child needs more intensive care. So those will be on, that'll be on the bond issue this fall in November, and then we'll start construction on that in the spring. So we're very excited about that. So that's the slightly more than five-minute rundown of how the hospital is doing. But it just seemed like a good time to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are. Questions?
Yes, I have a question. The, can you review your steps to lower the, in terms of your costs, the, the traveling nurses was the highest unexpected expense, or at least unusual expense. What are your, the steps you're taking to decrease that? And what financial impact do you anticipate with that next year?
Thank you for that question. So there's a couple of big things. The first big thing is as we start to move those alternative care sites and try to get back closer to our licensed number of beds, that enables us to roll some of those folks just off those contracts completely. The second thing is for folks who are still on contracts with us, lowering that hourly rate of pay, which is starting to happen across the entire market as the demand is starting to go down. We're starting to be able to push down on that rate. And then the third thing is recruiting permanent staff. So we're starting to see some of those travelers who had left our area come back home to come back to work. And so we're happy to bring those folks back. And then really being aggressive about recruitment, really pointing out for people that the unique things that we do, if you are a nurse who wants to do trauma, you want to work with us, right? That's it. So we really have a big push in our talent acquisition group on social media, in hiring events, in accelerating interviewing, in making sure that if we do an interview with you today and we can do like a quick background check, we'll make an offer to you today because we want to catch you before someone else does. We love all of the hospitals in New Mexico, but we want to hire those people first. So that what I would say is kind of the big things is number of travelers, rate of pay, and then recruiting permanent staff who are at a more level rate of pay. Yeah, so our budget for next year, actually, we're projecting a slightly better than break even overall for the year. So expecting to end next year at about a $10 million positive bottom line, that's our budget for next year.
Okay, thank you. And I know all hospitals are dealing with this. My wife works at Presbyterian. She's just PRN now. She actually works full-time at Johnson &amp; Johnson. But as a PA, they've asked her to stay PRN and they'll take any shifts that she can offer because it's a lower rate than what they have to pay traveling PAs. So I get that you guys are dealing with what every hospital is dealing with, but you've still got to make it work. You got to cut expenses and break even or better. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate Becker, for this presentation. Thank you for the update on the triage center.
It's exciting, isn't it? Thanks for having me.
Thank you. So I believe we have public comment now. And Julianne Baca, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have one signed up. We have Mr. Don Schrader.
Awesome.
I am not vaccinated for COVID. Now 76, I've never had a flu shot. My dear mother and I both were severely addicted to ice cream, cake, cookies, candy when I was a kid and in my twenties. She ballooned from 98 pounds at 26 to 270 pounds in her 50s. When I saw the hell my mother suffered for many years, I woke up. I changed. I've eaten only healthy raw foods for 23 years. I know of a man who lost 130 pounds by eating only raw plant foods. Cooking destroys most nutrients. I eat no meat, no dairy, no bread, no booze. A worldwide study in 195 nations found there is no safe level of drinking booze. Booze is slow poison to every cell of our body. No sodas, no sugar. Sugar feeds cancer. Sugar feeds all infections, including COVID. Sugar is the gateway drug to alcoholism, other drug addiction, diabetes, fat bodies, depression. I weigh 15 to 20 pounds less now than I did in high school 58 years ago when I was eating a lot of crap. I walk and exercise much. I get good sleep. I sunbathe most days. I want to live healthy until the day I die. Why suffer?
Thank you. Okay, no other public comment. Thank you, Mr. Don Schrader. So we, we'll move on to item six. And we have approval minutes. I move to approve the April 12, 2022. Thank you, Vice Chair Benson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Minutes approved. Approval of the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kessada. We will move on to item eight, eight. Madam Clerk, please issue resolution numbers for items eight A, eight B, and eight C.
Yes, ma'am. Eight A is AR 2022-40. Eight B1 is FR 2022-41. Number two is FR 2022-42. Number three is FR 2022-43. Four is FR 2022-44. Five is FR 2022-45. Six is FR 2022-46. Seven is FR 2022-47. C is FR 2022-48.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we will move on to item eight A, Budget, Fiscal Year 23, 2025. You're already here. Thank you, Jackie Sanchez, to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. The FY 23, 24 biennial budget was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on April 12, 2022. This motion was deferred for this evening and being presented as a separate agenda because the administrative resolution was not attached to the agenda packet. This motion is to approve the administrative resolution to support grants and projects listed in Attachment A, funded by various sources in FY 23 and 24 for the receipt of federal and state funding. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Can I have a motion?
I move for approval. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kessada, Vice Chair. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, Ms. Jackie Sanchez.
Thank you.
Approval. Item eight B, we will continue with Budget Director Jackie Sanchez to present.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this agenda is being presented, the fiscal year 2022, third quarter budget reconciliation. This is typically on the consent agenda and it's a standard quarterly cleanup of items. This agenda consists of seven motions. I can read them all at once and Madam Chair and Commissioners approve, or I can read them one at a time and they can be approved individually.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have any, um, thank you. Do we have any suggestions? Commissioner Kessada?
No, I'm okay with.
I just saw your light on.
Yeah, I just leave my light on. It's hard to push that button.
Does anyone want to move? I would move that we approve all, or we hear about all seven items for approval.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To approve Financial Resolution Number One, to increase revenue and expense budget for New Mexico Taxation and Revenue Gross Receipt Tax, GRT, administration fees for $700,000. To approve Financial Resolution Number Two, decreasing $1,063,558.91 in grant fund to adjust the fiscal year 2022 adjusted project expenditure budget. To approve Financial Resolution Number Three, decreasing $581,085 in the capital construction fund to adjust the fiscal year 2022 adjusted project expenditure budget. To approve Financial Resolution Number Four, increasing $1,117,752.40 in the grant fund to adjust the fiscal year 2022 adjusted project expenditure budget. To approve Financial Resolution Number Five, increasing $412,325.20, excuse me, $95 in the grant fund to adjust the fiscal year 2022 adjusted project expenditure budget. To approve Financial Resolution Number Six, increasing $10,297,747 in the grant fund to adjust the fiscal year 2022 adjusted project expenditure budget. And last, to approve Financial Resolution Number Seven, increasing $2,819,174 appropriating the budget fund balance and general fund for projects listed on Attachment A. And these are one-time requests.
Thank you, Director Sanchez. Do you have a motion?
I move for approval.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition discussion? Great. You have approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for your time this evening.
Madam Chair, just real quick, a point of clarification that may be clear to everybody, but just reviewing this earlier with Madam County Manager and, and Ms. Shirley Reagan, the, this is a kind of a net neutral issue in terms of our budget. There's no positive or negative impact. It's a, since they're tied to grants, the, this, yeah, this cleans up the budget. Thank you, Commissioner. In terms of expands it, it just cleans it up for revenue and expense. And I approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We will be moving to item eight C. And it looks like we have Director Antonio Jaramillo to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. My name is Antonio Jaramillo. I'm the Director of Operations and Maintenance here at Burnaleo County for Public Works. This motion is to request a, an increase to our operating budget of $500,000 to cover the, the costs that are associated with our providing services for our residential solid waste services. Our vendor waste management is allowed a, what's called a CPI index or a increase, excuse me, an increase, a consumer price increase based off of the volatile, the volatile market of, of, of waste management, of, of solid waste. So this year was 2.6%. And so we, we are projecting a, needing additional funding to cover for the remainder of the, of the fiscal year. So any questions?
No, I support increases to solid. I think we need to keep cleaning up our county. So thank you so much. I, any discussion? All right, I move, so move to approve. I have a second. Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, Director Jaramillo. On to items nine, approval. We have CIO Robert Benavides to present.
Good evening. Robert Benavides, CIO for Burnaleo County. Madam Chair, Commissioners, Madam County Manager, I'm here to present our first cybersecurity policy for Burnaleo County. First of all, I want to thank Special County Assistant Attorney Mara DeMule, who was instrumental in helping craft and edit the policy, and also Heidi Warren, who was very helpful in formatting and also reviewing and editing the policy for us. So this policy will rescind and re- So this policy will rescind and replace our internet use policy and our email use policy with a much more comprehensive policy that is based on the National Institute of Standards cybersecurity framework, which is nationally accepted standard. The two major changes we'll see in the policy is the adoption of a requirement for multi-factor authentication for all accounts at Berlín County. And then the second is the implementation of 24-by-7 Security Operations Center monitoring of all systems and network at Berlín County. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
And have both of these already been implemented, or this is to implement them in the future?
Thank you for your question. Yes, we implemented multi-factor authentication just after the cyber incident in January. So that's been implemented across all county employees, with the exception of MDC right now, where we're still in the process of implementing MDC due to some kind of operational issues, the way they have to work in the facility with secure areas. And then the Security Operations Center was implemented as part of the recovery from the cyber incident that we experienced.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, I have approval.
Thank you.
All right. So I think if there's not any further discussion, I'll announce the next commission meeting, which will be Tuesday, May 10, 2022, administrative meeting at 5:00 PM here in the Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. There's no other business than this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have a good evening.